We'll call the Scottsboro workstation Monday, May 6th. The order, the invocation given by Richard Bailey and the pledge of allegiance given by Greg Ashburn. Matt Ashburn, sorry.
Let us pray. By the God, just thank you for allowing us to be here, Lord, and we just thank you for the many blessings you give us. Lord, we just ask for your wisdom now, just to guide and direct us in all we do tonight, Lord. Just to, just ask for your hand on our city workers, Lord, just to keep them safe in their daily operations. Lord, we ask all this in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of changes to the agenda. We took off number 10. Number 14. So we'll go to item number 1, Billy Ryan with Forestry, I think.
Councilmember, it's good to meet you face to face. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the City of Scottsboro on managing the forest resources out on Goose Pond. Got a couple of handouts, can I approach you guys?
Yes.
You're sorry?
Just want to give you an update of what we've been doing over the last month. For those of you who are not aware, my name is Billy Ryan, we're forest management specialists. We're a forest consulting firm in Florence, and we specialize in marketing timber for the landowner. We don't buy timber, we are strictly an agent of the landowners. So we only sell in that way to avoid any kind of potential conflict of interest. So we have been employed here in North Alabama for 30 years, got a lot of experience. We've worked with a lot of different municipalities. I think our last two clients were the City of Sheffield and the City of Decatur. If you ever want some references, you can talk to those guys and see what we've done for them. So without further ado, I'm going to get into what we've looked at. We, we're actually looking at two phases of work on Goose Pond. One is management of pine resources and the other one is management of hardwood resources. We're going to have to delay a little bit on the hardwood resources because we ran into some NEPA issues. If you guys are familiar with that, it's kind of complicated is the best way to say that. As far as the island and reaching the island and managing the forest resources that are there. Process of working with Josh on that, and so as soon as we get a proposal for that, we'll come back and talk to you guys about that. But we do have an idea of what we want to do with our pine. For those of you who are familiar with a pine on Goose Pond, it's probably late twenties, early thirties in age. Looks like it was thinned probably eight to 10 years ago. Some areas were thinned heavier than other areas. We have an issue out there with some invasive species, but don't feel bad, that's everywhere in North Alabama. And we also, after the drought of 2016, we had some pretty significant damage from bark beetles and other pests that we have during drought times. Don't worry about that, that happens to even most man is about forest. But the good news is, we've gone out there and we've assessed what you've got, and that's typically what we'll do when we work with our clients. We'll listen to what you want from property, we'll go out and look and assess what you've got, and then we'll prescribe, of course, on how to reach those goals. Now, as far as the objectives I was given when I talked to different people with the city, I got a myriad of objectives. The first one is improve the health of the forest stand. That seemed to be the preeminent one, that's most people brought that up. Another one was to improve the economic return on investment. While this was not the primary objective, it was one that most of the members of the city that I've talked to wanted to at least improve it while we're there managing it. Of course, improve habitat for wildlife, and that is in a general category. We'll talk a little more specific about that in just a minute. And then set it up that if there was ever any type of potential development out there, make it where it would at least not impede that development, perhaps even encourage it and facilitate that. So, Phil, flip to the next page. We basically have three options here, I'll give you my recommendation in just a moment. But what would be ideal, we've worked with several developers over the last 30 years. The ideal situation is if a property is going to be developed, to actually have the property where the streets are at, the cul-de-sacs, the footprints for the buildings and the parking lots already laid out, and then we would conduct a clear cut in those areas and then do select harvest in the other areas. Obviously, we're not that far along, so that's really not an option for us right now. So we're going to look at basically two other options. One, as you see there, is quail management. Now, I know a lot of you guys are thinking, well, we're going to manage quail with the city. Well, don't rule that out. That may be something that is possible for the city, maybe even profitable for the city. What we do with quail management is I have worked over the last 30 years with wildlife biologists to understand what quail need and how to create a, if you ever were going to do a hunting lease on the property, how to create revenue opportunities for the landowners. And without getting too technical, when we manage a pine stand for quail, we thin more. We remove more trees so the sunlight will hit to the ground and create a habitat that's good for the quail. But also, if you were to do any type of hunting or recreational leases, it opens it up for harvesting of the quails. And I'm not saying that that is really our goal, but it is a potential. And we've got more and more landowners in North Alabama that we've worked with to manage for quail. You know, the third option is to continue to manage like pine plantation, the traditional forest management. And what we would do with traditional forest management is we'd probably thin that thing again now. We'd look at it again in another eight to 10 years, and then at that time you can decide whether to conduct a final harvest or to thin it again and continue to grow it as a stand. Based on the objectives I've been given, I feel like the best approach for us is the quail management option. Now, I'm not necessarily committing you to managing quail, because if you really want to get into the quail management technique, there's a, it's kind of intense. It's a lot more involved than just thinning it and then walking away. There's actually a chemical that we use called Amazapure. It's almost a perfect chemical for wildlife, because what it does is it takes out a lot of species that don't benefit a deer or quail or turkey, but it creates a habitat that's very beneficial for legumes and fords that are great for those dang species. So you conduct a chemical application and then you prescribe burn every two years. You burn half the property one year, half probably the next, so that it's on a two-year rotation. Now, I bring that up is because even though this is public land, it's got some potential, I believe, there to generate you guys some revenue for the city. It would need to be, like I said, a little more intensive with management, probably what it is now. But the reason I recommend this quail management technique is it hits almost all of our objectives, and it's the only technique that does that. We'll leave, you know, tree cover, so it'll be forested, it'll be open enough to manage for quail. But if somewhere down the road, 10, 20 years down the road, that's developed, then it's more attractive to a developer. Developers tend to like trees, they need trees, it makes the value of the real estate more profitable, but at the same time, they don't want a lot of trees like you would have in a timber situation. So based on those potential options, I would recommend the quail management technique. What I have in the rest of your package beyond the question and answer sheet you've got there is an example of a bid notice. I know when I work with most municipalities in state and county organizations, we have to put things up for bids. And I think that's a great practice. In fact, I practice that technique on all my timber sales of any quality. So we, what we'll typically do is we'll mail a bid prospect, similar to what you've got here. This was not completely, we're going to have the city attorney review this to make sure we've got all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed from the city standpoint. And then we're going to let the bids, we'd only give them about three to four weeks to look at the property. They'll turn in the bid sheet and then we'll select based on the bidder. And they'll have a, we've got a sample contract in there that they'll know beforehand that they have to live up to the provisions that are in that particular contract. And it just makes, while it's not going to prevent all the problems, it at least mitigates the ones we have and probably avoids overwhelming majority of them. So that in a nutshell is my recommendation and our approach. We have found that by bidding timber over the last, I've been in business for myself the last 23 years, I think it was 30. We've found that we can get bids in prices that are up to 56% more than they are if you just negotiate with individual buyers. Competition's the key to getting the best price. Are there any questions you guys have for me?
Couple of questions, Billy. Appreciate, appreciate your effort so far. Under the sale synopsis, what you've identified based on being out there is around 269 acres, is that correct?
That's correct. And there's actually a map, I believe. Yeah, it's, the problem with the map is it's such a small scale. I can get you guys a more, for lack of a better term, zoomed in copy of that.
That's okay. I was just, want to clarify that. And then, once Mr. Kennimer bless, I guess, the bid prospectus and the contract, then we could allow you to put it out for bid, so to speak.
Correct. As long as that's acceptable with the city attorney. And I'll get you a soft, if I get your email address, I'll get you a soft copy of that so you can edit it. I always like to have an attorney to review that, because I'm a forester, not an attorney. It's always good to get some legal eyes on those documents to make sure you protect it as much as possible. But I came up with 269 acres, I don't know if I mentioned this or not. There are some of the passes of pine that don't have enough living pine trees on it to continue to manage as a stand. So I would recommend while we're out there thinning that we conduct a final harvest on those. It's not many, it's the smallest portion of the stand. But there are some, whether it was thin too heavily last time or we had insect disease problems, it would just be good to press the reset button for some of those.
Any other questions?
The area you're talking about, 269 acres, is that what was recommended in the plan? I'm assuming, I guess, Mayor, did you give him the?
Yes.
Plan, the?
Yes.
I think Lynn Washington's general recommendations were that it needs to be thin. I don't know that, I don't remember his spec, specific. He was probably talking about a traditional timber thinning, from what I remember. And I'm kind of recommending sort of a compromise, you know, kind of, I felt like, we're calling it the quail thinning, and you don't even have to manage it for quail, but it's the same technique we use for quail management. I feel like that hits all of your objectives that you, that we would give.
So that's not thinning as much?
It's thinning more for thinning more. You'll have a more heavily thinned stand. Somebody in one of our meetings, Mayor, and I can't remember who it was, has gone to the landowner conference in, when it was in Paul County, two years ago. And that was one of our clients that they toured, and they just, I don't know how to say this, but other than the quail thinning is more aesthetically clean, it's prettier. And so us, you know, I swear, credit that, I'm pretty, it's pretty. So it, most people, when they see the quail thinning, they think, oh, this is beautiful. And generally, if it's maintained, it is, it's very attractive.
So I'm assuming this is time sensitive with pine market, the way it is, my understanding?
Yes, and it's time sensitive primarily because the area's wet. And so typically harvesting in these wet areas will occur from July to October. Not, you know, that's not an exact sign. Some theories it's dry enough, they'll extend beyond that or start before that. But that's, those are pretty general terms. So the sooner we can get it out, I feel like the more the buyers will feel comfortable about, hey, we're going to be able to get this in. We don't only give them a two-year contract, by the way, I'm sure that's a question.
Any other questions?
I've got, when we work this forward, it's the coil run. Do you have, like I said, I know you can have some folks that have done that. Can we get contacts?
Sure. And I'll even volunteer this, if any of the council members or anybody else, the mayor, wants to go visit some of these. We can drive around and show you what it looks like after. And I think that sometimes just seeing it gives you a better idea of what the finished product looks like, so.
And I like that idea because it, you know, if we try to get our community involved and we could set something up to do that, I think that's a great idea, because you've got kids and a lot of children, you know, I plow them and I love it. And so I think that's something that we, we need to look at.
It's an industry that's on the upswing. My background is in forest management, but I am a land manager, and because more of my clients now manage for wildlife, I know more about wildlife than I ever have. And I'm seeing a increased emphasis on quail hunting in North Alabama. And I do think it's something that could benefit the city from a recreational standpoint and possibly from an income standpoint.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you. Great time.
Billy, we'll typically put it on the agenda for next week, if everything, you get that squared. Thank you. Next item is a public hearing and alcohol license for George Kontolakos. Just go with that then. As I close. So without being said, this is time and place for a public hearing. Is the applicant here?
I'm standing by.
Okay. Is anyone here against this? Anyone here against it? Is anyone here for it, other than applicant? Okay. Ms. Phillips.
The applicant is George Kontolakos, doing business at Royal Rose Diner. Type of license is retail beer and wine on and off premise located at 23730 John T. Reed Parkway. There were four businesses surveyed and no objections. There were no residents within the 300 feet or the ordinance to survey. The nearest church and school finish requirements are met. License application is in order, health inspection is in order. Fire and building inspections are pending, final inspections and zoning verification confirmed.
So without being said, this is, this concludes the public hearing. We'll put it on next week's agenda as well and go through it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go to item number three, public hearing for an alcohol license for John Clemmons, doing business Lake Shore Watercraft Rental and Store LLC. So without being said, this is time and place for a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Is there anyone here against this? Is anyone here for this, other than applicant? Go to the investigative report, Ms. Phillips.
The applicant is John Clemmons, doing business at Lake Shore Watercraft Rental and Store LLC. The type of license is retail beer and wine off premise only located at 2300 Kenny Park Road. There were one business surveyed and no objections. There were no residents within the 300 feet. Near church and school finish requirements are met. License application is in order, health, fire and building inspections comply and zoning verification confirmed.
Thank you. So that concludes the public hearing. We'll put that on next week's agenda. If you want to do bigger, next week is okay. Go to item number four, public hearing for an alcohol license for Michael Gillen, doing business at Gillen Event Beverage Sales LLC. So without being said, this is time and place for a public hearing. Is the applicant here?
I'm representing Forest Public Entertainment.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone here against this? Anyone here for this, other than applicant? Ms. Phillips, we do the investigative report, please.
The applicant is Michael Gillen, doing business at Gillen Event Beverage Sales LLC. Type of license is special events retail seven day or less. The location is an event held at 1616 Heroes Drive. The nearest church and school finish requirements are met. License application is in order, health, fire and building inspections comply and zoning verification confirmed.
Thank you. So without being said, that concludes the public hearing. That'll be on next week's agenda as well. Do you want to go ahead and talk about the application for the tourism grant?
Yes, sir, if you don't care.
You can go ahead and stand up here and say a word, Mr. Phillips.
Mayor, city council. That tourism grant is inclusive with the concert we've got going on with Forest Public Entertainment. And they're expecting anywhere from four to six thousand people to attend this event. First time they've ever had one in Scottsboro and everything. The alcohol would just bring more people in, freedom to apply for it. But as far as the tourism grant goes, we were planning on upgrading that fairgrounds, which we have plenty of funds to do that. But the money would basically go to establish a permanent state on that property so more events can take place on that property. And right now, that property sits there, two weeks out of a year, does nothing. We upkeep, put money into it, cut the grass, whatever. And we need to generate some money out of it for the community and for the events also and everything. So that was the purpose, putting in the tourism grant and everything. Three questions, I don't know what I have to say about that.
I may have missed, how much money you anticipated on?
I put an application of $5,000. You know, I didn't know what exactly, how most dax can put on that thing. I don't know what stage, cause of the upkeep or anything. We do a pretty fair job of keeping it up, but still, you know, we've got a little thing, community activity, veterans to take care of. And I represent the BMW and the American Legion. I'm the post commander for the American Legion.
So have you got a bid, you mentioned the states, that's all the money's going forward, is that correct?
That's why I'm having negotiations and everything. It hasn't been finally approved, it'll have to be brought to both posts and everything. I've suggested it to both posts, but we haven't taken a vote on it anyway at the time.
When you do that, you're going to get a bid, you know, cost estimate on the ballot, or?
We will get a bid at a certain point. We have people that can do this work in the organization that will participate in this thing, myself included. Thank you. Yes, sir.
When do you anticipate both posts? Let me, little preacher ask if they've not approved it.
Well, they haven't approved it yet. It was tentative at the last meeting we had and everything. But I was under, under the impression that once we put that in, they were dependent on actually what it generated, the forest cough life, this concert and everything. This thing's coming out of four states right now and everything. Probably a lot of activity within the hotels, hotels, restaurants and things like that. But we don't know exactly what it's going to generate at this time.
That's why I didn't ask about budget, I can understand that. I was like, when do you anticipate the posts approving?
I can, I can bring it up at any time and everything. We still have the public meetings this month, I can bring it up if necessary, to both posts, to that. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Would y'all be adding on to the existing stage that's there, is that?
Uh, no, it's a mirror. This stage would be put right in the very corner of the fence, separates the junior high from the fairgrounds and everything. It's kind of caddie corner, we've got to keep it out of the way of the carnival and fair.
I see.
Which we've got a carnival coming this week, y'all come. I like the, we're getting ready for it, and we're still a little bit behind on the bid right now and everything. I was curious. They're bringing a stage from Birmingham up here. Of course, it's got all the audio and everything involved with it. That thing's going to cost $14,000 to bring it up from Birmingham. I thought that was kind of expensive for a stage. If we had one, all they'd have to do is add the audio in. Whereas more money they make, the more money we make. So that's it.
Any other questions? I'll put it on next week's agenda, talk about the alcohol and this for tourism grant. As soon as you get that from both places, we get that discussed.
Okay, okay. I will, thank you.
Go to item number five, discuss the little agreement with the Avenue RDS. Ms. Phillips?
This is just to renew the agreement, it's expired. Everything is the same as I asked in previously, my own shares, no changes.
Any questions? I will fill in next week's agenda. Go to item number six, discuss the CDVG Citizen Participation Plan Resolution. Ms. Phillips?
This is a resolution to update our citizen participation plan. This just goes along with applying for the demolition grant through the CDVG program.
Anyone have any questions? It's not, we'll put it on next week's agenda. Go to item number seven, discuss the bids for the mower with Strick Farm. I would like to strike these bids, keep them not to public knowledge as far as what they actually bid. We had one of the folks that got the bid, got in a day late as far as in the mail, and they weren't able to get it in because it was due the day before. So I think with it, to be fair to everyone involved, it needed to be opened up a little, a little longer. So we need to put those out for bid again and not discuss the amounts. Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda next week to vote on that.
So we'll all rate it again?
Yes.
Thank y'all, I think it's a legit directory.
Any questions on that? We'll add it on next week's agenda. Go to item number eight, discuss the bids for the pickup truck for the side by side department. Ms. Phillips?
We posted one bid, now three bids, and received three bids for the pickup truck. And we received two bids, I'm sorry, I read that correctly. Harbin Chevrolet bid $39,000 and Harbin Ford bid $39,000. It's recommended by the Bid Derby Committee that the bid be awarded to Harbin Chevrolet as the lowest responsible bidder that meets specifications.
Any questions on that? We'll put it on next week's agenda.
It's the first time that we were saying the time bid. For pros.
Yeah. Go to item number nine, discuss side by side replacements with the land too. Mayor?
Um, this, Mr. Ledwell had requested to replace the one that's there at the landfill. They use it to go over the landfill, various areas besides trash pickup. Anything else Stacy you can add to? The one that we got is in need of repair.
Yes, so the bid that I seen on the pair was about $4,000 and it's not, it's not worth putting money in it.
not, it's not worth putting money in it.
Right.
So, we asked for, yes, this.
Nineteen, or is it sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four cents?
It's.
They're allowing, yeah, they're allowing, two thousand, no, we traded, traded in.
Or you going surplus?
Surplus. I thought it was fourteen, so I think it was sixteen. That's off the source, but also, I'm not sure we're really that precise.
Okay. Any, any other questions? I will put it on next week's agenda. Here's the next item, discuss the position for the recycling program. Mayor?
Um, we're ramping up, things are looking better for the recycling program, and, and looking at this, it will be a little more labor intensive than what we've had in the past, and so I've got, Mr. Wheeler did a spreadsheet here for remaining four months of this fiscal year to add one more employee that would be dedicated to the recycling program, and so it's eleven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars for that one person. And then you see, he, he ran it as if we were to hire two, but Stacy and I talked again today, and we're going with one more additional employee, who would be working. Uh, he, he can elaborate, but we picked up all the cardboard recycling for Scottsboro, or whatever, I think that's right. He has got now the cardboard business, and we picked up all of his commercial cardboard accounts as well, and increased our workload tremendously, and we're using some inmates when they're available, but we also need additional help. And then we're, we're hoping by the, our goal is by the first of June, correct Stacy, that we'll be back to the curb side recycling pickup as well.
Yes, sir. Um, the, the initial design was repurposed property that the city had, and that's going on right now. We haven't received anything back, although we might have sorted, which is going to be at the labor system, kind of shredded inside. We have asked for some information and some prices on this equipment, once the design's back for the Heroes Drive location. That's where the labor's going to come in also, for storage and travel. We, we hope to have this thing packaged, but when we're ready to take this material right now, we're just, we just don't know where to put it. So, hopefully that's going to happen fairly quickly, and then we'll be back with you with the design and get your approval on it.
Any other questions? Thanks. Okay, next week's agenda. Next item is to discuss the street department capital outlet, Mayor?
Uh, yes, in your package, as you know, we surplus some equipment at the street department, and had a couple repairs come out of it, but their uncommitted capital outlet accounts now got sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. I had mentioned to you earlier about allocating some of our sales tax, but our surplus account, or our capital outlet account has got more money since we've been successful surplusing the Kubota tractors and the dump truck. Anyway, we've got a pending sale, state sale auction coming up this week. We went to Montgomery last week and looked at equipment, and so I had mentioned earlier, and mentioning again tonight, we'd like to use some of these funds for the street department as we bid on equipment at the sale Thursday, it'll be an online auction. We'd identified several pieces, you know, our wants are greater than what we can afford right now, but we'd like to use these funds, or some of these funds, as we bid for this equipment, and it's like I mentioned before, we can get the three required signatures, but we'd like to be able to use these funds towards some equipment that comes of open sale, before it's accepted.
Any questions?
What you're asking is same thing we did with solid waste, just to have the money.
Sure, fifty thousand on their account. And this is what this equipment's used for, I just, we had had some questions among ourselves, and so Rick did me a printout, the council, we all know what we've got, what we've brought in off our surplus equipment, that way everybody's looking at the same set of numbers.
Any other questions?
So, you're just going to pull a fifty thousand?
I think so.
I'd like to keep it low, but I'm.
Sure, sure.
What equipment, Wayne or, or you made?
We're looking for, looking for trucks, and we're in the tandem, our tandem is down yet, has a rattan issue, and the hospital is big enough to go with that.
Yeah, they're dump trucks that Wayne was having a bid, dump trucks that, we could about, you know, and he's, he advised us to wait, that they may actually go a little cheaper at the auction, but low hours, five and six-year-old dump trucks that's been in the state system that were thirty-two, thirty-four thousand dollars. These are a hundred and seventy, eighty thousand dollar dump trucks.
Is that bad?
Yes.
Any other questions? Put it on next week's agenda. Go to the next item, discuss the storm shelters. Mayor?
Oh, Gosh, it contacted Survive a Storm today. We've talked about, you know, the second shelter is going to be northeast and there by the Boys and Girls Club, and we had made a down payment on, on the second shelter, but we had hoped to have our formal quote back of the bounced use so that we could authorize that money, but they didn't get the quote back to us, so sort of hold that open for next week. We, we just need to formally approve the spending of the money so that we could issue a PEO, so that they can get the shelter in, in production.
Okay. Any questions?
Hold on.
Do you have an idea of when?
Yeah, hold on. Well, they, they had told us if we'll get on the PEO, that they're looking to deliver around August one, and Wayne and them, we've already had discussions about getting a pad built, and all, but we're looking to allocate forty-eight to fifty thousand is, is what's going to be due on this second shelter, and that includes the installation cost.
When do you see, when, when they will get back to give us that?
She said tomorrow. I sent her email about when we pay twenty-seven, five down, keep percent down, so we'll just wait for the remaining balance.
We'll put it on next week's agenda, so if you get it, and if you don't, we'll, we'll know, wherever.
All right.
Next week's agenda. Remember we approved that down payment when we thought it was still?
Yeah, well, it, it has gone high, so we, we've saved some money in that regard.
Go to reports, Mayor?
Um, a couple of things. One thing I wanted to mention, please keep Robert Fanning and his family in our prayers. His sister lost her battle with cancer, she's eleven months younger than Robert, sister Sharon, and all that family, and it's been a two, you know, about a three or four-year battle for her, just keep that family in our prayers. Uh, second thing, as you know, I had mentioned, we got in an air curtain at the brush dump, we got it through FEMA, this thing, I think they found somebody, said sucker, to get it off our, our lot, but anyway, it's not been very successful, but they went today to pick up the one that we're renting, supposed to be getting back anytime from Georgia with that, and we plan on getting that air curtain put in place and start using it tomorrow on the brush dump. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Uh, just appreciate Stacy being here to clear up the recycling, you know, we're excited that we're getting close again, thank you. Also, wanted to mention, you haven't got your ticket yet, Auburn Club is this Thursday night, they have their dinner, and it's going to, you know, support the scholarships here in, in Scottsboro, Jackson County, so you can pick up tickets at Claypot or Raymond James for that, so, and I'll, I'll be there to get your picture, maybe, so. I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Mashburn. How you doing?
I don't, I don't have anything else, and I just want to congratulate the cross-country teams, the boys and girls, for winning the blue trophy. We're definitely proud of them, and that is a big deal, and I'd like to recognize them, you know, the resolution at some point in time, and have them all come here, so I think that they, they recognize, that's all I got.
Mr. Ashburn?
I don't have anything tonight, just appreciate y'all coming out.
Mr. Stewart?
I disagree with Greg, it's a big accomplishment for both our, our teams, for all the teams that are beating, but Scottsboro did really well, and they do need to be recognized, but, but I also appreciate everybody being here tonight. Thank you.
Um, just to reiterate about state championship, I think that'd be something great, we did recognize them here at council meeting, the resolution. The other thing was the, the junior high, the bass cast, the fishing team this first year, they did, they're real successful. Gary, what, what was the, remember what place they came in?
Um, well, I think we had three teams over top twelve, it was twenty, twenty-six, I think, twenty-six, it was all teams.
They did real well, and they qualified your nationals, so, just, they've done some really good things in the new sport, been at it, but want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, there's a lot covered, and all good stuff happening in the city of Scottsboro.
With your permission, I'd like to bring to your attention one young man, Hank.
Yes.
Fourteen years old, who set the United States record for pole vaulting.
Yes.
The gentleman's fine, and name goes to Memphis Church, amazing athlete. His sister, I think, also came first place in female pole vaulting. Congratulations to both of those children.
That was adjourned, thank y'all.